Okay, good evening. Let's get started. It's August 31st, 2022, time is for the year. We have a full agenda and I expect to make this discussion on some of the topics on the agenda today. In attendance are Director Loma, Director Bankers, Director Jurgensen, Director Mal Pakam, and Director Daniels. Director Art is running a couple of minutes late. She's caught in a traffic, so she will be here soon. Director Nelson is on excused absence today as she's spending some time with her family out of town in a location where there is little or no internet access, so good for her. And joining us today at this session is also Superintendent Gall and several office administrative team. Thanks all of you for being here, so let's jump into it right away. The first item of the agenda today is Summer Bridge update. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Gall, and for the record, Director Art is joining us.
Dr. Mal Pakam, board, thank you for the opportunity. We have a very robust agenda today. I do just want to frame Summer Bridge that I was fortunate to come out and an orientation visit prior to my start date of 1 July to witness Summer Bridge in person. I thought it was critical that I be able to get eyes on one of our main strategies in order to help close some of the learning loss that we had seen during COVID over the years prior to my superintendency. Let me start by saying I could not have been more excited for the elementary school engagement and learning that I did see in the buildings that I was in. I was very satisfied, but I did not see enough of it. So we do have a participation level issue to talk about. And as I progressed up to high school, I saw what I believe to be a not-quite-complete credit recovery system in place for Summer Bridge that we'll talk a little bit about today. But I do think that Summer Bridge remains a great opportunity and a tool for the district to continue to tackle some of the learning losses, many of the learning losses that we've seen, and that it should be expanded at the elementary school level to include as many families as possible and re-wickard at the secondary level to make sure that we're actually accountable and achievable to this idea of increasing foundational skills for our students to prepare them for the rest of the academic year.
So I know that we had a report out there. I initially thought it was going to be a video presentation from either you or Mr. Files, like the flipped version that you normally do. You did provide a report out there, so are we jumping right into questions? Or do you want to quickly summarize? I just want to be efficient, as efficient as possible to keep it moving.
I think we'd like to quickly summarize and then go through any questions on specific slides.
Yeah, then let's keep it brief, assembly. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll just run through a couple of the quick summaries. First of all, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Darian Founds. I'm the Science and Health Facilitator for the district, part of the Curriculum and Instruction Team. I'm also the coordinator for the Summer Bridge program. So I'm here to just give you a couple wrong overviews of the program, and then more importantly, have some dialogue and answer some questions and so forth. So, you know, feel free, I invite you to just jump in with questions as I go through this, and then obviously we'll build some time at the end to have some discussion. So just moving forward to the first slide there, just to give some foundational background information as to the architecture of the program. There's four key pillars to the program for Summer Bridge. This is rooted in research from the Wallace Foundation. So that's kind of the grounding research for the design of this program. So academics is obviously the priority in the program, but we also know that other elements have to be in place to support that. So schools design their own site plan that addresses these four pillars. They have some guidance documents to support them in that. But they also have autonomy to design their own program. Marcel, are you the one that's driving? Okay, sorry. So a quick summary of academics. K8 was focused on reading and mathematics. High school was focused on credit recovery and preparation for the next course. Moving to enrichment, this is where there's a lot more latitude at the school level. A lot of it has to do with staff availability and also opportunities in the community. So I listed some of the examples of enrichment that came through from the site plans. Moving forward, we know that social-emotional learning is also an essential part. Each school was invited to hire a mental health provider, and that could have been a counselor or it could have been a social worker. And that mental health provider could work with students at a one-on-one basis based on need, but then also did tier-one lessons, small group work where they would pull students out. They would push into a classroom, teach a lesson, co-teach, and they also facilitated some projects that just build a lot of community and a lot of culture around the program and around the school. This, I extracted a couple SMART goals. So each school was asked to develop a SMART goal in the area of academics, enrichment, and social-emotional learning. The academics goal there was something that we provided for them as an option, built around the common formative assessments that Dr. Colicky's team created in third through eighth grade, mathematics, and reading. And then that's an example of an enrichment goal from one of our elementary schools that was hosting the program. And then finally, a social-emotional goal based on the Panorama survey, which most of our schools have access to at this time, but my understanding is not all of them yet as it phases in. This is a quick snapshot from the self-reflection. So once again, this is self-reported from the schools. Dr. Colicky has more of the programmatic district-wide level data. So this is self-report out from principals, filling out the reflection at the end. So we have about half of the schools reporting that they met or exceeded their academic goal. Moving forward to some of the comments that they had around their SMART goal. Obviously, student attendance is key. You'll see that in Dr. Colicky's data here shortly. The students that are showing up consistently. The recommendations from the Wallace Foundation said that 80% is a good mark for attendance rate on a voluntary summer program. High school students earn credits toward graduation. And then basically, Summer Bridge is serving as an extension of the school year. So what we're trying to do is how can we support students with unfinished learning, extending the school year another month, essentially, another four weeks, and preparing them for the next year? We can't reteach the entire grade level in four weeks, so what we have to do is focus on that unfinished learning. We identified high-leverage standards that schools were focused on at the K8 level. And then at the high school level, they were focused on the key skills from that particular course and trying to get them prepared for the next course. So in an Algebra I, II course, that would be getting them ready for geometry. Enrichment goals, as you can see, about 90% of the schools are reporting that they met or exceeded their own enrichment goal. That could be anything from project-based learning to different STEM projects to participating in an end-of-program showcase or symposium. Some of the reflections I just mentioned. You know, doing things in other subject areas such as the visual and performing arts, physical education and STEAM. We also had a budget this year for experiential learning. So that could have been either going out into the community for field trips, where it could be also bringing in community partners. I held a community expo that had about, if I recall, about 18 community partnerships from around Colorado Springs and the Pike's Peak region, and they came over to Tesla. And then I invited leaders from the host schools to come over to try to connect those people face-to-face. So we had a lot of opportunities where programs were coming into our schools after a few years of really not being able to engage with our students at the school. So that was exciting to see theater groups, Catamount Institute, and other organizations that are in the area supporting students. There was a lot of project-based learning themes using Project Lead the Way and other realms in the CTE area. Moving forward, social-emotional learning goals. These were mostly tied to the work of that mental health provider, and the mental health provider designed the goal and the implementation of reaching that goal. So like I said, some of the schools focused on using that Panorama survey. So they took end-of-year data from the Panorama survey, and then they built that out to design some lessons and some targeted work, trying to move the needle on some of those social-emotional competencies. Especially with Summer Bridge in the area of self-efficacy and self-confidence. A lot of the students that are invited to Summer Bridge need to have that kind of confidence and that belief that they can accomplish the task at hand and meet the standards and move forward, whether it's in mathematics or reading or whatever. And then I had a couple open-ended questions on the reflections of just successes and challenges and recommendations. So here's kind of some of the common themes that came up regularly. Teachers and principals valued the small class size. We tried to cap class size at 15 students, so that way we can maximize instructional modeling there. The fact that it's free for all students, so especially families that are from low socioeconomic backgrounds. There is absolutely no charge for any of the programming involved with Summer Bridge, and that includes transportation, it includes breakfast and lunch, and obviously it includes the programming tied into their day. The common formative assessments that Education Insights developed with Curriculum Instruction, they felt that teachers believed that it, they found it valuable to target their instruction. They liked the pre- and post-format, where they could give a pre-test the first couple days, see how kids did, and then they could target their instruction for the remainder of the program. There was a lot of value in the community partnerships that was reflected in our family survey. So kids would come home talking about they got to go, they got to do this, they got to do that. So they were excited about those community partnerships and those enrichment opportunities. And then some of the challenges. Enrollment, this was our first year with Power School, working with Summer Bridge. So there were some learnings there. One of the challenges that I want to work on moving forward is the remote enrollment process, and that's basically where we're taking students that are enrolled at a school that's not hosting the program, and how do we get them enrolled at a neighboring school that's close to their home geographically? And that's a complicated process as it stands right now for the schools, and it's a complicated process at the district level. So we are going to try to make that a better process for families and a better process for the educators who are working Summer Bridge. Attendance is a challenge, especially at the middle school level. At high school, there's the credit-bearing kind of process to it. So students are tied into, they know they need to be there to earn the credit for the course. At the elementary level, parents have a little bit more ownership of getting their child to school. And then at the middle school level, it is kind of one of the sticking points is with attendance. And then also we notice a drop-off toward week four of the program. So that last week in June, attendance starts to kind of slide a little bit. And then just all the logistics that's involved with running a large-scale summer program. So everything from, you know, hiring staff, because without staff, staff is kind of the determining factor in what you can offer and what you can provide. And then transportation and getting kids from other schools kind of integrated into your rosters and access to your programs. And then a few suggestions. Once again, the enrollment and attendance process came up there. Attendance incentives for families came up a couple times. So we offer attendance incentives for students, and that came up from a couple schools of reaching out to the families for incentivizing it. And then additional resources just to support the teaching and learning there. And then a more robust planning guide. So there's some documents that they have and some things that they have, but they were just asking for some more tools to help them in that planning process. With that being said, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Colicky to report out on district.
Before you leave, so when we're talking about the mental health providers, how was that organized? Was data from the Panorama results at the end of the year tailored to the sites? Or is it just general overview or what?
Yeah, the reason that we picked self-efficacy as our common social-emotional competency theme was because of that Panorama data. So I worked with Sonia Urban on that data.
Summit Urban?
Sonia Urban.
Oh, Sonia.
She's in the MTSS department. So especially as we look at the secondary level data, that is a huge indicator for us to help students with that self-efficacy and self-confidence that they can achieve the learning that, you know, they're being tasked with. And then also, MTSS built a toolkit that was available to sites. So we had a shared folder, so mental health providers could access those. There was lessons in there, there was project planning ideas and different things like that that were all tied to that specific competency.
And was that still not clear? Is that delivered by school counselors?
Yes, or it could have been a social worker, so.
From the school district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's go through, David, before we get to the roundup questions, because I want to get the fidelity in what we actually saw on results for kids. Thank you, Mr. Founds.
Will we just take a look at, just go a quick overview of demograph? As you can see, the overall enrollment number, 1,079 for K through eight. That's about a 7% participation rate. So from the end of last year, we had about 14,600 elementary students recorded. And then for nine and twelve, nine through twelve, 548, which is close to 10%, which is a little bit higher. And you probably reviewed the demographics, so we can go two slides ahead. The attendance is something that I want to hone in on a little bit, dovetailing from what Darian talked about. You can see here that the vast majority of students made it to the 10-day mark. And the entire program was 20 days, and then you see that trend that he pointed out, whereby the 16 to 20 days, our attendance rates were pretty low. And when you see it in the K8 red bar with the x-axis at 16 to 20 days, that's predominantly being driven by middle school. So middle school attendance lagged towards the end, most certainly. So you can see the average attendance days, 14 for elementary, 13 for middle, 17 for high. High is a reflection of the fact that it was tied to credit recovery efforts. We can go to the next slide. You probably saw that these pre-to-post differences, this was a big request from the board from last year, that we do a pre-to-post assessment. These, as Darian explained, we worked closely with instructional coaches to design these. These came out of items that we purchased with Power School. So they were not necessarily teacher-designed, but they were selected to reflect the skills that were being hit and the skills that were being focused on in the bridge program. So these were vetted items out of the Power School item bank that we purchased. And you can see a significant change, mean change in both ELA and math across the entire group. So that's very encouraging. We are running some longitudinal studies on this. So longitudinal meaning, is this a persistent effect among participants? So that we can look at the effect of Summer Bridge on beginning-of-year district benchmark assessments. And I'm actually have a link that will be in your Friday night note that highlights a study done out of our office. Brittany Gilatic is working on her PhD, and she took this on as a study. And she did a flipped video for you talking about the high school program. So these are high schoolers last year in Summer Bridge, and then her analysis of their, of the impact of Summer Bridge on last year's fall benchmark. It's really quite interesting. And there does appear to be a persistent effect in some places, ELA in particular, and then not as much in math. Please review that. It's your leisure. It'll be in the Friday night notes. So if we go on to the next slide, oh, you already did. So we have, this is grades six to eight, so this is middle school. You can see that we still got pretty good jumps. But I do want to point out, really, that this was out of 100. So think about this as a percent, is 100 points available. So really, in skill acquisition, we're talking about half, right, 50%. Really, let's put this in the context where it needs to be. In a time span of 20 days, academic skill acquisition is going to be, the fact that we got those kind of bumps is really encouraging. What we don't see in this data is what melt we prevented, right? So by engaging in these activities for an extended period of time, what kind of melt did we prevent going into the summer? That's what we're going to try to do with a longitudinal study. You can see in grade eight, this is also a reflection of attendance. We did not have enough students taking the pre-to-post to be able to record any changes. And that's, I think that's an issue that we need to tackle for the next round, to ensure fidelity across all grades to take the pre-to-post, because it is very helpful information. If we go ahead, this one I want to highlight, and then I'll jump to the very end. This was the course distribution for, or grade distribution for high school. If you remember back last year, if you looked at those slides, the predominant grades were As and Bs. This is an exact flip of that. So we have the predominant grades being Ds and Cs. That is a reflection of the target students. So the target students were on a boundary between a D and an F in a particular course. Confirm this with several high school principals as well. So they're really looking at that bubble student that with an extended amount of time in the year, they could improve their grade from an F to a D, hence the high number of Ds. So they did not come in with As, and they ended up with Bs. They came in with Fs and ended up with Bs. So that's worthy of more discussion, I'm sure. And the cumulative GPA coming into the program for these students was very low, 1.3. So this is a target demographic that is in need of extended school year, for sure. And so that's the nature of that grade distribution. If we go ahead and skip forward, this will be the last one. So our family feedback, we did do a family survey. We can see the families were coming into this with a concern about academic learning loss. Again, this is the third year of that concern. Families agreed or strongly agreed that Summer Bridge allowed their child to gain academic skills. This is across all grades, so this is very strong, 80%. Agreed that their child is better prepared for the next school year, 75%. This one is what's really strong. This is a net promoter score. And so what this is, is the likelihood that a family would recommend Summer Bridge to another family. It's a pretty standard marketing question. 91% said they would, they would do that. I think that's a real market signal for us to look at the role that Summer Bridge played in families and their appreciation of the program. It was resoundingly positive. So the qualitative, the qualitative feedback overall was positive. If there were any negatives, it was specific, very specific program or site-based feedback that we're utilizing and sharing for future planning. So that's the overview. Overall, we did see academic bumps, whether those are persistent or not, is yet to be determined. We'll look at that. And families appreciated the program to a high degree. So I will open it up for any questions.
So thank you, Dr. K. And on behalf of the board, I'm sure everybody will agree with us on this. We want to thank all the staff that put in incredible amount of work getting ready for that summer enrichment, the preparation work that the staff had to put in, and also taking time, figuring out how to take a time in June, when usually our teachers take time off, and then coming and working to get our students caught up. And I got to attend a couple of schools, one with Superintendent Gall, I think. And we'll come to some of the challenges and like what Superintendent Gall mentioned, the rigor and the instruction was high out there. So it was good to see that happen. Board members, questions?
I appreciate the pre- and post-test data you brought this year. That was a request last year that didn't happen, so I appreciate that. The survey data looks good as well. What, so our enrollments was at just over 1,500?
If you go back to that slide, that we had, you know, because I had a question on that.
Your demographic distribution has the total number for grade.
Yeah, I think it was slide, I apologize, they all say slide 15.
Uh, yeah, slide 16.
So it's the first 15, the actual 15.
16 of 22, I think it is.
Yeah, it's a couple more back.
Yep.
There you go. So my concern with this is this was way off of our projected estimate at the end of the school year. I realize that, Mr. Founds, you mentioned having the issues with enrollment through remote locations. I know we're coming out of the pandemic stuff. If we do this again, I would like us to recommend some sort of Plan A, B, C, and D, where if we only have estimated 2,000 kids, we're doing Plan B, and we've got these campuses, we already have transportation and enrollment stuff figured out. If we've got 10,000 kids, we're doing Plan A, and we've got all those, and all that to be ready before spring break, really. Because we kind of got caught with our pants on our ankles and pushing out these millions of dollars to really teach two or three kids in a classroom some places, which I want kids in our classrooms, and I want our teachers to be paid for the hard work they do. I just want more cheeks in the seats to be able to get this pre- and post-test, catch up and all that. So that'd be my only, my main concern is, you know, we had estimates and we had actuals, and then I think I even mentioned back in May, you know, what do we have for incentives to keep attendance high, especially in middle school? I remember teaching middle school Summer Bridge, and we had field trips at the very end, and you had to have, you know, 14 of the 18 days, you know, attendance field to go to the zoo or to go bowling or whatever it was. I don't know if we did that or not, but some sort of incentive to maintain, you know, that attendance throughout the program so we can get them caught up. Those are my two things, having a backup plan for a backup plan, and then having some sort of way to attack attendance throughout.
So since we are talking about attendance, I'll follow Director Jurgensen on this. So I, because in my notes, when I went back and looked from the June work session, and then I had a number written down, and then I wanted to confirm that I had the number written down right, and I did go back to the June work session and referred to what was shared with the board at that time about summer enrollment. And this was a week before summer enrollment was about to start. And the number that was shared with the board was we had 6,500 students registered in summer enrollment. 6,500 is a far difference from 1,600. Okay? And then it was shared that last year in Summer Bridge, we had 5,500. So what happened? How did that number, 6,500 on June 1st, drop to 1,600 within a week? Did we get the enrollment wrong at that time, when that information was shared? Go ahead.
The enrollment count was misinterpreted, partly by me, so I could take ownership of that. If a student was enrolled in multiple courses in Summer Bridge, when you download the report and it says an enrollment count, the way Power School was reporting that out, if the child was in three courses, it would count that child as three times, because they were in physical education, they were in math, and they were in language arts in like a middle school, so on that three blocks. So that was misinterpretation of that initial Power School report that came out in early June of just that end number that's at the bottom of the report. But then when you actually go to the student-level report, student by student, you could see, oh, the student's listed multiple times, the student's listed multiple times. So when you condense it all down to actual, you know, cheeks in the seats, that's the number that comes out.
So then, when we were planning, were we planning staffing for 6,500 students or 1,500 students?
What I did for the budget for this year is I used last year's final budget as the benchmark for year one, and then I allowed for a 10% growth in the program, just to buffer, because the budgets are due November 1st of the year. So on November 1st, we don't have staff, we don't have host schools, we don't have those things nailed down. So I took what we spent in 2021 and added 10%, especially in the salaries and benefits, because 90% of the program's expense is going to educators.
So last year's number of 5,500 students that were shared with the board, is that an accurate number? Because that's what some boot dogs do.
From last year?
For last year's summer enrollment, 5,500 students, that summer enrollment.
What was our attendance this summer?
No, not attendance, enrollment.
I'd have to look that up.
No, it's, I'm just saying it was shared in September, around the same time last year with the board, and what was shared at that time was, that attendance was 5,500. I'm assuming that that was not multiple enrollment of the same students. Okay?
That could have been too, because, yeah, because based on the budget, there wasn't 5,500 last year and then 1,500 this year. So that number also could have been a misrepresentation of the report in, it would have been Q at the time.
So we'll clean that up, and to Director Jurgensen's point, we will come back to the board with a recommendation for Summer Bridge that will have right-sized options. We have to move from the passive nature of extending learning into messaging the importance of extended learning. This is critical to the success of our children, to be able to extend the learning year, especially when we have, for all intents and purposes, free dollars allocated against it. The government has given us ESSR dollars to close the learning gap that came from COVID. There are two accesses to improve learning. One is time, and the other is quality of the instruction. We are working diligently to inform our best-first instruction, which will be better at the end of this academic year than it was last year. We have to communicate the importance of time to our parents. When I asked David to convert those numbers into weeks of learning, they were magically three to four works, three to four weeks of learning gained, because we extended the learning year by three to four weeks for those numbers. Because we extended the learning year by three to four weeks for those number of kids. That has to be communicated to parents for them to understand the challenges that the district and their children face. If you do four weeks into the however many week long the academic year, it's going to take five to ten years for us to regain the two years lost. So we can't let this be a passive twenty five hundred signed up and a thousand showed up. If this is what happened in the first week of school, we would be out door knocking and we would be out calling families. And we would be sending reports and we would be doing everything we can to get our families into the into into the buildings. So we will be more targeted in the families that we ask and we will be more specific in the follow up that we get. While meeting a couple of options to ensure that we're right staffed, to make sure we can't just give money to educators who commit their time and students don't show up.
I do have a couple of further questions, but.
My notes. I understand the difficulties, the challenges, and I appreciate the goals. They're pretty high, right? No problem. And I see the gain, good. Why couldn't we, I know there's a lot of, I've seen a lot of obstacles, but on my mind, if we want to gain, how could we add that program after each day for the entire school year for the students that need it? Same thing, maybe not as long, many hours a day, but if you extended that over the entire school year, you would gain those weeks. If time, is it less than time and seats is important? We had a fight for five minutes for the elementary. So, but if we can extend it over the length of the year, then you then you'd cut your your gained time in half.
After school enrichment, forty five minutes, something like that, targeted on certain groups.
I mean, if you have the ESAR money, you just gotta reshoot it, just just redesign the elephant.
Yeah, that comes back to the budget. Um, and so just the board knows clarity about this. We have money set aside from ESAR for one more year, Miss Odom, or? So I thought we had only for next summer. Are you saying we have for the following summer too?
I think it's only three years for Summer Bridge.
It's the next two years.
Really?
Well, we already are and we've already done two years, uh, last year and this year.
So the funding for for um Summer Bridge goes through September thirtieth at twenty twenty four.
So we have two more summers earmarked.
Okay, I thought it ended with next summer. So and how much do we have earmarked for every year of Summer Bridge?
Uh, it's right at um four point two million. But it's it's four million in ESAR and about two hundred and fifty thousand in what Darian was explaining. They had to pay out of pocket for transportation and food, correct?
At at a couple of the sites. And then I also use some of that summer literacy money for planning sessions during the year and stuff like that. So um, it's it's kind of a separate contingency fund just to help with the planning of the program before it starts.
So roughly about four point three million every single year. So we have set aside eight point six million dollars for the next two years.
That happens.
Does this also include the week before we have, what do you call that?
Uh, jumpstart.
Jumpstart, yeah.
Yeah, so uh, jumpstart is in there. The access program is under the Summer Bridge budget. And then also the traditional summer school programs at Tesla and Digital.
Okay, what's the access program?
The access program is run through Valerie Skates Department. Um, and it's for, it's a transition program for recent graduates of uh, for recent graduates to kind of transition into um post-secondary education or workforce readiness. Um, so it's a partnership with Pike's Pe- Pike's Pea Community College, yep.
Councilors for the.
So uh, we use Summer Bridge money to pay for counselors to run that program.
Okay, the summer drain or whatever it is that they call.
Yep, yep, yeah.
So all that pays with the four point three million dollars?
Yes, and and last year's Summer Bridge was one point two million dollars under budget. Um, I don't have final numbers for this year because payroll is still processing and things like that, but I can provide a a final report from grants.
So when it's under budget and it's ESAR money, are we still using that rest of the money? Does it go back and are we using it? So we make sure we are not leaving money on the table when it's a grant money?
So if there's any unspent money, we always have the opportunity to reallocate it in other areas.
Okay.
As we work through the process.
Okay, so part of the audit every year, because it's an annual audit of the ESAR dollars. So that will flow back in to be reprogrammed into the following year.
So we don't have two year, we have more than two year.
For ESAR three, it goes through September thirty, twenty twenty four.
But you just said, if we don't use the money.
No, we have to use the money by that time. But what money we didn't use this summer will flow into future.
Oh, this.
Sorry, it isn't very.
No, no, I heard it wrong.
Yeah, that's fine.
So two things there. One, uh, when the money does run out, we just have to figure out if this is a value add. And how do we keep the program going when the ESAR money runs out? Or is this a program that because like what Director Loma was talking about, in summer, our parents and families have so many other things that they are doing with vacations and all the things and they want a break from school for some of the students. Is it better to add something during the school year as 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 a after school enrichment? More focused on that as opposed to when I just do the rough estimate with the the numbers that that Chief Odom gave me, it seems like we are spending roughly about twenty seven hundred dollars per student for that one month of Summer Bridge. So, um.
There's definitely increased participation without increased cost opportunities because we did not maximize any one single location. And the initial plan of as many locations as possible proved to not be as operationally as efficient either. There is certainly a strong draw for families to want to be in the school that they normally go to, but we believe that the regionalization of area superintendents this year will provide for a more cluster specific solution. Where not every elementary school has fifty kids in it, but we can do every other elementary school having a hundred or a hundred and fifty kids in it and provide a transportation solution for that. And still then get an efficiency where we can't be spending that amount of dollars to do it. I think the great takeaway is, again, in the classrooms where we had dedicated e- educators and administrators and active participation by family and student, we killed it on the numbers. And so pre and post shows that we were doing very strong, very strongly, particularly in math. And I think we'll double down even that more this year on the backend of our first year of Eureka Math for K through eight. We do need to regroup as a team and reevaluate credit recovery. We did have stronger attendance in high school. But the the fidelity of the ability to say how a student migrated from an F to a D is inconsistent. And none of us should be satisfied with twenty seven hundred dollars a student to say, congratulations, here's your D. So we will, we will set a higher bar and a lower cost per pupil.
That's right.
But I also want to double down on Director Loma's point that will come as a as a area superintendent callback comes to brief us on the after school programming. There are expanded opportunities for time. We would love to be able to start a conversation with some of our committees and communities on is there demand for Saturday academies as well as expanded after school programs that are hyper-specific to tutoring
Yeah.
on specific skills and knowledge bases.
So, okay, before we go to Ms. Callback, any further questions on this topic of summer?
No, I just, I just like that. Years ago, they had a thing called upward bound for us minorities and minority groups. And we, and I attended, so I don't remember that. It was on the weekend, volunteering, and I had to go hungover, but I made it.
Okay, so no further questions on Summer Bridge looking around? Okay, Director.
Yeah, um, Dr. Colicky or maybe um, I answer this. How many students or families gave feedback on on the survey to let us know? I mean, what was the percent there?
That was over, over a thousand. So the majority of families gave us feedback.
Good, good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the feedback or the takeaway is just listening to the board comments, this is a value add. That this is um, the instruction that we see in our classroom and what our teachers are doing during the Summer Bridge. It's good to see that pre and post test now, there is some rigor added to the instruction that is being provided. There are some specific targeted standards that are being addressed, highly effective standards. All that is good. But the concern is that we got to increase participation in this or not have this program. When I go, there was another slide out there, school by school. There are some schools with twenty kids or fifteen kids in there. And I don't know if that was a school that was a remote uh thing and went to um, uh, another um uh, school. But there are some schools with ten kids or fifteen kids in there. So we have to figure out how to implement this program in a more cost efficient way. If we are going to continue this when the ESAR money runs out. So and whether that is going to be, and maybe that can be brought back in front of the board after you guys figure out before we go forth with it for next summer. Just come back with a specific plan on how we can tighten things up. Yeah, okay, moving on to the next item.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, in the spring of twenty nineteen, we identified a need at Monroe and Twain Elementarys for uh some after school programming that would help them to remain competitive in the enrollment market in their area. Uh, we identified funding and implemented free or very low cost to parents. Actually at Monroe and and Twain, both before and after school opportunities, um, that families very quickly took advantage of. Both of those programs filled quickly and maintained waiting lists. Obviously, there had to be some changes to some of that programming during COVID. We could not cohort students in after school programming. But those two programs are back and in force. And in fact, as of today, both of those programs are full. Last spring, the board tasked me with adding eight additional schools to our list of schools uh that offer such programming to families. And so with the help of the area superintendent team, we chose schools uh at in all four quadrants of the district as well as a school that is very central to the district. Um, and tonight I have an update for you, actually a little beyond what is hung on board documents for you. The document that I'm going to pass around to in just a moment is the same one you'll see there, but has an addition to it. You'll see whether each school has a coordinator hired for this program. Most do, and those who don't have a Plan B that they're working while they're processing a hire for that coordinator position. You'll see the number of students currently enrolled in their after school programming. And you'll see the percentage of those students enrolled in the after school enrichment who are also new to the school. Um, and so I'm going to start these around. And while these are coming around, I'll just remind you that West and Midland is a combined program. We do uh transport students from one school to the other after school so that they can participate in this programming.
With school to with school. You don't need to give me, yeah.
I I will verify that for you. I am, I'll verify it for you. There are also a few principals who wanted me to include some celebrations for you to see. So you'll see those for Monroe, King, and Rudy in this document.
Is this the only document, Ms. Callback, or is there another one?
Yes, yes, sir.
You mentioned something about enrollment and new students enrolled, is that?
It's in uh, in this. So there's a full statement under each, yes.
Oh, yeah, percent of new students. Yeah, I see.
This is just updated from what's hung on board docs.
Okay, um, any questions to Ms. Callback on this? So what's going on with Audubon in process, it says?
Audubon has had a little bit of a challenge in hiring a coordinator. Uh, they have identified someone who is interested in the role. And so that person is working through the HR process. In the meantime, a teacher has stepped up to coordinate that process uh, until the coordinator begins. The same is true at Adams.
Okay, and some of the schools are at fifty, is there a limit on how many students we are accepting?
With the funding and the availability of staff that that creates, fifty is really our limit per school. If we wanted to expand beyond that, um, we would probably need an increase in funding to be able to pay for an additional person to ensure that we're running safe programs.
And so the schools that are not at fifty, is there not a demand out there or?
The demand hasn't been as high at those schools, but they are still enrolling.
There's correlation between non-coordinator and low population as well, so.
There is.
And I believe that as soon as we can populate the right coordinator, we can get a better message out.
Yes, Endeavor's office has been instrumental in helping schools to market this programming.
And we are doing that, is it, you know, prominently advertised outside the school, a banner or something?
From the district and the school, both. Um, the school is using all of their channels, newsletter, website, social media, everything that they have access to, to share that word as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the coordinator does have some other lead assistants, lead aides or anything like that? Is it just the coordinator with fifty?
No, um, it is the coordinator and if they have fifty students, at least two teachers or ESP there along with the coordinator. And generally for a school that is running a full program of fifty students, it's also two rooms so that we're not packing them into one space.
Okay, got it. And there the dance instruction and so they're being transported to different, how is that part of it?
No, that group comes to Monroe to provide instruction on site.
To the schools.
That does remind me though, it is part of their budget that these schools can include field trips as part of this after school enrichment. And so I do anticipate that those will get started in the near future too.
Now, it, the programming here is oftentimes, I've seen, where the after school becomes more like an extended daycare. And and is, you know, doesn't have very much rigor at all at that level. Is there um, a focus on that or or is there a follow up on that? Are we doing like we did on this program, finding what the grade level is coming in and after they've attended their after school program for the year, have they increased? Have we got that data?
When principals were offered this opportunity last spring to participate, one of the commitments that they needed to make was that this would be more than just, um, we're actually careful not to call this daycare. It's not licensed as a daycare, it's not serving as such. Um, principals did need to make the commitment that this was truly enrichment programming. Um, there is obviously a time for students to complete homework, those sorts of things. But lots of instructionally based across content uh enrichment programming going on. And I think we'll be able to provide you uh with updates and further data reports as the year continues. Most of these sites are about two weeks into their program.
Yeah, because if it's not improving academics, then we're just throwing money away again.
Yep, so I just checked with Dr. Colicky on we, our commitment to track these students. So we can get the same pre and post data. We're still early enough in the school year that we'll go out and get some baseline assessment that has already probably happened within their uh, their teacher of record classroom. And then we'll run those quarterly assessments and bring those numbers to the board to see if we see a spike in students that are engaged in this program.
And and this will help motivate the principals to take a little more of an interest in their in their daycare center?
I would say that all of these principals are highly motivated and interested in their after school enrichment.
Remind me again, was this supposed to be a a self sustaining program or this out of our budget, a line item budget? I can't remember.
It was, uh, the board approved one million dollars.
Okay.
So this was just one time for this year to see if it was going to increase enrollment. And if I get the numbers wrong, please correct me. Uh, but that was my understanding. Uh, we added one million dollars to include eight schools to provide this program. And see if this is going to help drive the enrollment and then make an decision at some point in time. If we need to keep this program going, uh, right now we don't charge anything for it, or do we charge a nominal fee?
It's free or low cost. Schools can make that decision. Some schools have chosen to charge a fee of five dollars a month so that parents can hold a C. so that parents can hold a seat in the program, especially for full programs. This encourages parents to bring their child or to have their child attend the program on a daily basis.
So to answer your question, Director Backus, if we need to keep this program going, we need to find another million dollars for every subsequent year, will that be fair?
Correct, yes.
Yes, so that's what we need to fi- figure out, okay, we have this addition, is this a value add? Or do we look into going back to our community, because when I talked to some of the principals, they said that this is a great add and our families would be even willing to pay twenty five dollars a month or something like that. Is that something that's still a nominal fee compared to what they would pay in the open market to keep the program running? Is that uh something the board should consider? Or where is that one million dollars going to come from, from our general budget?
Well, we connect the dots, like the A F M N F O use a summer bridge program and connect the dots instead of two doing two different things, kind of merge them, and there's be a lot of synergy, a lot less hiring. I mean, there's, there's, I think if you got creative, you could probably figure that out better than I can.
Absolutely, sir. With the data showing a hundred and seventeen kids that were new to the district
Yeah.
coming here, I know the math isn't quite, you know, at ten thousand a kid, that's a million dollars. Yes, we have other costs with those hundred kids, but I'd love to be able to say that we brought a million, you put a million dollars on the table, we brought a million dollars in per pupil funding. Yes, I have to spend that million dollars to educate those children over the rest of the year, so we're still paying money to get them, but that's the exact demand signal we want to see. Now, we have to be able to close the gap on the schools where that percentage is lower, and we also need to to direct Aloma's comments make these complimentary, not just to summer bridge, but to an extension of the learning day. And so having our um Ed Insights team track that data will allow us to make sure that we are targeting the students and the families with greatest need, both educationally and just for how it is that we support our families during the school. So thank you to the board for this million dollars.
So that that's something then we have to figure out if we have the money in the general budget with all the budget constraints that we do have. Is it possible to open up a million dollars to keep this program going? Uh, when I looked at the enrollment for the district, which was provided to the board, uh, Rudy, Freedom, and Audubon certainly has increased enrollment compared to October of last year. Uh, so those are three schools that are in this program, so it has positively impacted King, Monroe, and Adams. The enrollment was about the same. The concern was Twain, Trailblazer, West, and Midland, whose enrollment are down in spite of this program being in that. So uh, is this program keeping that, you know, even getting that enrollment? So Trailblazer is a concern. It's a brand new building that's got less than two hundred students in there now. So even with this program in there, so, um, yeah. So you discuss it internally and come back to the board at some point in time by in your mid year budget or going for the budget next year. If this is a value add and if this is uh something we need to keep funding or do we merge like what Director Loma was saying, the summer bridge with this and figure out an efficient use of the dollars. Thank you. Any further questions to Miss Kalback on this topic? Thank you. I know that you put in a lot of work in this. Uh, the board kinda came up with this in March, and then you were on it with Dr. Gladich at the time and reaching out to our principals and figuring out schools. So I'm glad to see at least this program up and running in just about every one of our schools. So thank you for doing that.
The principals and families are also very grateful for the funding to be able to offer this, so thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda today, I think it's C M A S uh assessment results, state assessment results, so um uh, this year we had going back to the April of twenty twenty two, we had full assessments. The year before, we had grades assessed only on E L A or math, but now we went back to pretty much normal assessments. And uh, so we got the state test results. I know that the challenges of the past two years, the pandemic shows in some of these results. This is just the baseline and we need to build on from that, but that I'll turn it over to.
Yeah, and I want to pick up on some of your language, Dr. Mel Packham, on baselining. This is a great opportunity for me in my first few weeks as a superintendent to understand the needs of the system. We had full testing, however, much of the growth information you see will be not quite connected gears because we have off years and off subjects that did test and didn't test. And because of small end sizes, sometimes we will have both great growth that has shown and great lack of growth that has shown. And so Dr. uh Colicky and team have done good work to be able to uh put our arms around that. Generally speaking, I'll uh I'll use my Malcolm Gladwell revisionist history. In elementary schools, we're kind of out of the COVID position. We're back to where we were in twenty nineteen. So that's good news that we've kind of climbed up out of the bathtub, but now we need to remember that we did have some challenges presented to us in twenty nineteen across all public schools, of which now we are reinvigorated in twenty twenty two, twenty three to go after. However, the challenges are a little bit more difficult as you look at some of the middle school numbers. And then there are some inconsistencies at the high school level as well, what at high school level as well. You'll see a really strong bump when you look at high school, but that's because now the testing medium has changed. We're using S A Ts and pre S A Ts as those assessments, not C M A S. Because it's impossible for us to believe that our kids suddenly bump up fifteen, twenty, thirty percent in achievement just as they move into high school, when they've been a part of a bubble the whole way through. But we have some really good data here. It'll serve as a strong baseline for us as a team to move forward. And uh, we're excited to present this to you, and we really want to shout out both the Ed Insights team for being able to slice this data as quickly as they have. And secondly, to the educators that have committed to trying to find the ways to educate children over the COVID time period remotely, externally, well, conversation here and there, and then coming back last year, I know is a real challenge. So for the winners out there, huge atta boys and pats on the back, and for those that still have room to improve, we are here to help them get there in this next academic year.
So excited to talk through this and just have a discussion. There are a couple, a couple big, high level things I want to spend a little bit of time talking to you about before we open up to questions. First of all, though, I want to point out that the data visualizations that you have, for the most part, are coming out of Unified Insights, which is a Bauer School tool, and it is working. So, I'll throw that out as we have, we have a lot of our tools back. So, um, I want to start out very high level because these are the numbers that we will hear and we need to be held accountable to throughout the, throughout the year. But overall, we have, again, baseline year, but we have work to do. So in elementary, those first few slides, so the first slide you can see, um, yeah, thirty six percent passing at or above grade level, is what that means. Um, scale score wise, that means a seven hundred and fifty. There's different ways to slice and dice this. So we're looking at percent passing right now. In math, it's twenty nine percent, so we are hovering at a third of our students performing at grade level. Would be another way to say it in elementary. Still, still work to do. The next slide, middle school. Uh, thirty two percent, so pretty commensurate with elementary at E L A. But um, you know, all the, all the dashboard lights are on for middle school math. Eighteen percent uh percent passing or percent um performing at grade level. Um, a lot of really big initiatives that are happening and with a lot of support. I I have every hope and expectation that this is a baseline that we grow from. And then high school gets broken up into two, so ninth, uh, ninth and tenth graders take P S A T. Eleventh grade takes S A T. Uh, both of them college board aligned. I will speak to the point that Superintendent Gall made about that little jump in bubble. There's a better metric, actually, so I'll speak to that in just a moment. But you see that jump, fifty five percent. Now, in in college board measures it as um uh, college ready or approaching college readiness or on track for college, would be another way to say that. So they take a cut score and they calibrate it in a different way than C M A S does. So um, a better way to look at it is a percentile. So let's kind of think about a line of a hundred, right, and where you're at in that line is your percentile. If you're right in the middle of that line, you're fifty. If you're at the front of that line, you're at ninety nine or a hundred, right? Uh, if you're at the very back of that line, your percentile is one. So if you look, if we look at middle school percentile, in E L A, it's forty two, um, for all of our schools together. In high school, it's thirty five. So you can see we actually have a little bit of a drop. It's just the way the college board takes and categorizes that as college, becoming college ready. Does that make sense? It's, so in the future.
For E L A or math?
Uh, that is for E L A.
Okay.
In math, uh, the average percentile for middle school is forty one, the average percentile for high school is forty two. So we see it's not a bubble, right? We see, we see aligned performance moving up. And in the future, we'll use, we'll use percentiles for this re- for this exact reason over, uh, you know, approaching college readiness. So we see, we see challenges in both ninth and tenth grade as well as the next slide in S A T. So high school S A T, these are eleventh graders. Uh, again, forty five percent and twenty four percent, but it's, it's, it's move, it's tracking together. These are our high level numbers. I want to take a little bit of time and use a bit of a metaphor here. So if we go to the next, the next slides. Um, three weeks ago, had the chance, bear with me with my metaphor here, I think it'll make sense in a moment. Um, had the chance to do a twenty four mile backpacking loop with my daughter. And it involved four passes of twelve thousand eight hundred feet, twelve thousand six hundred feet. So you go up, you go down, you go up, you go down. You can do it clockwise, you can do it counterclockwise, and it's a different trip depending on which direction you go. I think that's an analogy to what we're looking at across our system. Not every school is on the same, is on, is taking the same trip. We're on the same goal, hit all these four passes and survive, which I did, yes. But we're taking, but the, but the paths are different. The paths look different, the paths feel different. One pass might be really killer for one school and one pass might be relatively easy for another school. Right, these are the goals that we're setting. So I want to share with you some local data. So this is da- this is data from our district. So steeper trails and heavier packs is what I call this one. What you're seeing here is the correlation between percent mobility of a school and E L A scale score. This is C M A S scale score. You can see clear, clearly a relationship. As well as, so what you can see here is a, is a downward trend, clearly percent mobility has a, has a negative impact. But also percent F R L trends with that, that line, right? So we have percent F R L that kind of trends along uh, that same line with them being kind of below that line of best fit, higher F R L above. If we go to the next slide.
Just a question on that, may I have that? The size of the dots, what do they represent?
Uh, that's the size of the school.
Okay, so the bigger the dot, the bigger the school?
Right.
Okay.
The color of the dot is percent F R L, and then Y axis, percent mobility, X axis.
And when you say percent mobility, it's the students that are moving from school to school?
School to school, yeah, or out. If this is state level data, so it could be even out of the district.
Okay.
Go to the next slide. We can see that.
Maybe skip a sub slide in the.
Percent, is this one percent minority? Uh, yeah, let's go back one. There we go. Here we have a very strong relationship percent minority, so this is math, um, uh, percentile. So we can see a very strong relationship. So our schools, uh, higher percent minority, also correlating to F R L and a, and a negative slope. We're climbing same mountain, we're on the same trip, but we have different trails and experiences. Now, we can say, okay, what do we do about that? Uh, because we're not gonna, I know this board and I appreciate it about this board. We're not gonna just sit back and say, these are just trends. Oh, well, what are you gonna do, right? You're expecting, rightfully so, and we're, we're expecting to deliver on our promise to every family in the district. That your student will leave the eleven prepared academically and socially emotionally for whatever opportunity they want after they graduate. That's, that's what we do. And so we can't just sit on these demographics. So what's happening? Even though we're climbing on different trails, some of us have forty pound packs. I also came across people, I knew this was in existence, I've never met somebody who did this. Twenty four mile loop, they ran this thing in a day. So you can imagine, me and my forty pound pack, I'm like going like this, they're nothing. They have a little bag of water and some snacks, and they're rolling, right? They're experiencing that trail in a very different way, right? And it's the same trail, same outcomes, but in a very different fashion. I mean, I watched these guys off the top of a pass and they went down the trail. And I had to take like three extra ibuprofen, just watch them run down the trail, like it's awful. But they had a very different experience, right? And that's, that's the, that's the metaphor that I want us to anchor in on as we talk about these results. So what are we doing? Um, the five E slides or the next slide, we have tools that we've been talking about. So this is our own data. So what you see is, again, same things, school size is the size of the dot. Five E average is on the X axis, and then this one, we're looking at E L A percentile. You can see that as the five E average goes up, so this is an average scale score across all five essentials, we have a statistically significant positive improvement in E L A performance. The same, the same relationship holds for math. Right? But we still have one interesting uh relationship, and that is that our low F R L schools are still underneath that line, right? If we have a system that works for every student in every school, we want to see a mixing of those colors. We want to see yellow mixed in with purple. Right? Otherwise, we're just, we're just acknowledging that the pack can be lighter for one of those purple schools. Right, let's just be honest. But we're not going to use that as an, as an excuse for anything. So we want to see mixing of the yellow with the purple. So if we go to the next slide, um, we still have five E average on the bottom, and now we have math median growth percentile. This is the state's calculation for where we land across all schools in the state. Now take a look at this, even stronger positive correlation, but notice what's happening with the percent F R L. We see mixing. Right, we're seeing a system in five E, climate and culture with our own data, starting to show us that we can overcome some of the most persistent, persistent effects on academic performance. This is encouraging because we see a system that's starting to, to address those issues from the first two slides and those challenges. So what are we doing about it? We're addressing climate and culture. We're looking at really robust ways of measuring student growth, both in the, within the district, so that's our district benchmark. But also really quick cycle assessments, uh, C I As, common interim assessments that teachers can use for very quick checks. Uh, Director Jorgensen, you're an expert in this area because you've used it for a lot, right? Very quick checks within the classroom. So as we look and discuss the data, no excuses, we have a lot of work to do. A third or less of our students performing at grade level is not acceptable. None of us in the room or in the district accept that. But underneath that, we need to be a little bit more sophisticated in understanding what is happening and that it is showing positive effects within our own data. So, all that to say, um, we, we uh want to use the right, right equipment. So if we go to the next slide, this will be the last one of my little metaphor. We want to use the right gear for the climb. So that's the loop I did, I'm so proud.
Wait, you gotta tell us where this is at.
It's oh, oh, yeah, it's right by Aspen and it goes all the way around the Maroon Bells.
Crested Butte.
Uh, you can get to Crested Butte off the backside, but you started Maroon Bells, it's fantastic.
I'm gonna do it in the winter.
Yeah, there you go. I was gonna say, this is right after you bike down Bike Speed, you can go and do this, it's gonna be great. So this is our benchmark, E L A scale score. So this is our district benchmark. Last year with Galileo, this year it's, it's even improved with Star Renaissance. And the relationship with the E L A scale score from C M A S. You can see a very strong correlation between the two. So even though it is kind of difficult to give a benchmark, it does take a little bit of time. It is very predictive of how we will do on C M A S. And I think we'll even see this even stronger uh with Star. So we have the right tools. Now we start implementing them in a systematic way, right? To get over those four passes, twelve thousand eight hundred foot passes. All of us, no matter forty pound bag, camel back and some snacks. Whatever your situation is, getting over those passes together is the key. So as we look at that then, just looking at some of these results, I won't go through every slide. If we go to two slides forward, um, elementary, we'll see just some persistent gaps in uh subgrouping, especially around minority and economic disadvantage. Again, you saw that in that first slide. Economic disadvantage is a big, big impact, but we, we have tools that can help us overcome that. In elementary, as Superintendent Gall pointed out, we are recovering. It appears we're recovering from some pre-COVID levels. Um, it's still work to do. If we go ahead and advance, um, you can see the different subgroups. Uh, so you have elementary math percent passing. And go to the next one, and then we'll have elementary E L A. Apologize for the busyness of this slide, but I just wanted to have you be able to see by school what is happening. So we had eight schools that met or exceeded pre-COVID. Eight schools at fifty percent passing and above. It's kind of our really minimum baseline that we wanna see from all schools. We really wanna get to that sixty-five percent at least, obviously we want, higher the better. But we have seven schools below twenty-five percent passing. So quarter of those students in those schools are not functioning at grade level. Um, you can see the, the same by math for the next slide. Uh, we have four schools exceeding, meeting or exceeding pre-COVID. Uh, six at fifty percent, fifteen percent, or fifteen schools below twenty-five percent. Again, a lot of work and you can see which schools those are. Um, do, so to growth, the next slide. Fifteen schools outperforming the state, this is in ELA. When I say outperform the state, it means that we exceed the fifty percent. So we exceeded half the population of, of the state. Because remember, this is scoping out across the entire state. Uh, we had some that were exceedingly high, Bristol, Trailblazer. Uh, five schools exceeded expected growth, six did not. Again, in many cases, uh, we are looking at one grade determining the growth number for the entire school. So let me just use EL, uh, let me just use fourth grade. So this year's fourth graders would have taken ELA as third graders last year, right? So they, so they were third grade last year, took ELA. Our fourth graders, they took ELA. They're the only students in that elementary that have matching scores that can be computed for growth. Because the fifth graders are now getting, getting categorized into the middle school. Does that make sense? So this is an extreme sample. Like in some cases, this is twenty-five kids on the order of one classroom. So is it, is it valuable information? Absolutely. Is it information that we can act on and make decisions from? Yes, but it is very limited. So we can see that.
Dr. K.
Yeah.
To clarify, median growth percentile, for those that maybe don't know, it's basically the, if a student's with us for a school year, they've gained a year of learning.
Correct.
And so when we're looking at median growth percentile, these are, it's kinda confusing because you're seeing a state median at fifty. But these are kids that have learned a year's worth of learning and a year's worth of attendance.
Correct.
At a different school. So just trying to clarify that for some who don't know what MGP might be off the back of some.
Thank you, thank you for that.
So if it's above fifty percent, then it's more than a year's worth of growth.
If you're above fifty, it's more, yeah. You've exceeded expected growth.
If I'm, when you look at a school like Queen Palmer, which we talk about all the time. Their growth is about that fifty percentile, so they show remarkable growth. But when you go back to the previous slide on, um, the percentile that are grade level proficient, they are still at thirty percent. So they're growing their kids, but still not able to catch up their kids.
Correct.
To what it is. But a school like Bristol seems like they're doing both at the same time. So they are catching their kids up and growing them.
True.
So, right, so we're trying to switch the vernacular from winning is not, not drowning. Winning is actually reaching your hand at the end of the pool and finishing the race. And so we are shifting that right now from growth towards achievement. And to David's point, very limited sample sizes. But we're confident that the interim assessment now giving us that very clear correlation that he showed in the R square slide. To be able to match what we know during the year, instead of just being surprised at the end of the year. Right? Make no mistake about it, every school should be predictive of where they believe they're going to be at the end of the year. There should be no surprises.
Yeah. We go to the next for math. Uh, this one, again, uh, holding growth, enjoying the benefits of it, but holding it that it's a sample. Uh, median growth percentile by school, nineteen schools grew faster than the majority. So to your point, um, Director Malpackham, um, math was very low. So we have a lot of opportunity for growth as well. So, so that's, um, why we see a lot of schools that are growing faster than the majority of schools in the state. Um, four schools exceeded expected growth, again, really along the same lines as prior. Eleven schools did not meet expected growth. Go to the next slide in middle school. Uh, you can see overall, again, same, same general trends of gaps between minority as well as large gaps in economic disadvantage. Free reduced lunch is the same, is, that's the metric. Uh, but economic disadvantage continues to, to have a gap between, uh, twenty-seven percent passing, uh, compared to forty-six percent for non-free reduced lunch. Uh, next slide in math. Very similar, very similar gaps. Uh, in, we are in middle school, um, we, it appears that we're recovering from previous, from last year. Again, limited sample, but, um, still underperforming, uh, twenty, twenty-nineteen or pre-COVID. Uh, next slide.
If you go back there, Dr. K.
Yeah.
Interesting the flip in females underperforming here versus males in our other slides. And any idea on that?
That is a really pretty common trend for math.
For math.
Uh, yeah, females will outperform males in ELA and males will outperform females in math.
Yeah.
That was, that was my previous life at UCCS, is trying to unravel that. Trying to get more participation.
Maybe I shouldn't say this, but I will. But sometimes the expectations that we set in the classroom, it becomes like, oh, you can't be proficient in math.
Absolutely. Or even the way we phrase and, and frame the subject, the types of problems, uh, we could, I, I'll stop now. Cause I could go on forever.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, it's, it's a, it's a persistent thing across the nation for, it's been for a while. It's actually starting to close now, but. Uh, so if we go to the next, middle school ELA percent passing. Um, we can see North Middle School exceeded pre-COVID. Um, all schools besides that, below fifty percent of their students passing, um, at grade level.
And.
And North is as well, actually.
And when you look at North and the three years, they have exceeded what they were pre-COVID and they are trending in the right direction there. In spite of the challenges of COVID, they haven't used that as a crutch and they are trending in the right direction. Some of our other schools are going in the opposite direction, which we don't want. But to see North, in spite of all the challenges, going in the right direction.
That's the side picture we wanna hone in on.
Yep.
That's their step up.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know what.
Well, I would say it starts with the building leadership out there.
Yeah, and what.
The building leadership out there, but that's what I, I would, that's my speculation. When you have a strong building leader.
A real clear, a real clear focus on establishing a team, um, kinda shared, some shared leadership approaches. Really taking discipline, student discipline very seriously and doing some innovative practices there. But their five E track with their, with their, 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 five E data track with their enrollment data.
Better than that.
Plus they're very connected to their community.
True.
They do a lot more with the students who they know have deeper needs. And they make sure that the team does it. So it's, it's more than just. I don't wanna. It's just more. And he's reported on that. That particular principal has said that time and time again, if we have to wash clothes, we wash clothes.
That's a great point.
Yeah, they don't just, and he hasn't for a very long time. So I believe pouring into them provides a different outcome.
Yeah. And we have a new principal there. So this will be a good.
Well, yeah.
This will be a good case study of when we have a systematic approach, it's systematized, not dependent on a personality. That's when we have a winning case.
So the systems and structures are in place at that school. So we gotta ensure that the new principal is able to carry that.
Right.
Uh, at the same time, at the slide, what stands out to me is West Middle School in the far corner there. That's a significant jump from, uh, the previous year to this year.
Yeah.
In the wrong direction.
Yep. And Galileo is our school on watch, so those resources need to, a lot of support going there, a lot of work happening already.
And West Middle School is a GMP program too, so that, that even more concerning.
All right, for the sake of time, we'll go to the next one, middle math percent passing. Same, same general trend, but overall depressed, overall down, uh, from ELA. North continues to exceed pre-COVID performance and again, all schools. So this is, this is a big, big red light for us. All schools are below thirty percent of their students passing entry level. And three schools are below ten percent passing grade level. So middle school math, critical time, it is a challenge. Our middle school math teachers are really, you know, with the new, new curriculum, new tools. Uh, hold out hope that that will really apply well. Middle school math is such a, such a vital transition from arithmetic thinking to algebraic thinking, so.
North, Galileo and Swigert feed into Mitchell. And what it tells me right there is like if five percent of the students are grade level proficient and, uh, Swigert is another five percent out there. Those students are the ones that, they're not ready to go into high school. But unfortunately, they're going into high school unprepared to take the rigors of high school. We're not doing justice by Mitchell when we are not preparing them in middle school to get them, get up there.
Same with the elementary, see, does that middle school, those feeders?
We are strategically so five E climate and culture, but the next level of our assessment strategy being common interim assessments. Honing in on supporting middle school, middle and high school in particular, but middle school being the, the primary focus for support and how to use those CIA's. Um, and they have really, they have really bought into that process and are really engaging it in a, several principles in a very deep fashion. So that'll be good to have that additional layer, layer of information and assessment data to see what's happening on those really day-to-day decision, uh, instructional decision-making. So we've already, we've already trained Holmes, um, Swigert's, uh, and I think, uh, very soon Saban. So getting really deep use of CIA's going, so is a key, key component of this. We go next to growth, so middle ELA. Um, we can see again, North, uh, two schools were in the bottom thirty percent for growth. So this is again, compared to the state. Eight schools did not meet expected growth, and this is in ELA. Moving on for math. Um, Jenkins exceeded expected growth wildly. That's, that is a fantastic number right there. Um, four schools met or exceeded expected growth and then five did not. So that's a mixed, mixed bag there. And again, we're looking at one class to determine that.
So how is academics leadership and learning? I know you're right here new and you're taking this all in and if, if I'm you, this is five alarm fire, all hands on deck, what the heck's going on? And get those Jenkins math school, math teachers into the building and see what they're doing. And get teachers from Man and, and Saban and West over to, you know, give them subs, then go over there and, and shadow them and see what they're doing and pick their brain and look at their data. I mean, this is, I'm, I'm not gonna sleep tonight, this is ridiculous. What, what are, what are your thoughts? What's your plan of attack? I know you're new on the job, but we hired you because you're one of the best. Unless you have a time that you're gonna talk about this later, but.
Yeah.
I, I wanna know what we're doing to attack this problem.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in here. I think, and we, we probably do need a lot more time to talk about that in appearance.
We don't, we don't have time.
But, but what I would say is, um, and it's connected to the, the great work and strategy work that was done last year and the team that exists now. Um, so at the very beginning, when I was newly coming in, um, August third, was right around the time we were, um, making the transition into, uh, our new curriculum for mathematics.
Wonder, is that K eight or is that?
No, no, no.
Uh, Eureka Square.
Eureka.
Eureka, oh, that's that.
And it's, yes, it's K eight. Um, so all teachers and administrators have been trained in utilizing the new standards-based resources. And so it is very important in math implementation to have, um, it connected to standards and the work that's been done previously in best-first instruction, to have aligning, matching resources. Um, so was able to, uh, be part of that, uh, attend the training, um, with administrators, see, um, our teacher leaders being trained as well. Um, that, um, in connection to what I know our superintendent has talked about with our new organization and we've been organized, um, uh, with areas, um, the deep connection with area superintendents, um, and professional learning, um, along with what we call a system of support and accountability across the scope of the year. Um, with that, uh, on September seventh, we'll have our first principal, um, K twelve meeting. And at that meeting, we're going to pull together, um, the professional learning that's happened to date. Um, with the mathematics resources, with the assessment, uh, training that's happened through Ed Insights with our new interim assessment, um, and then also, uh, uh, with our focus on best-first instruction. Um, every, uh, school at that meeting will talk about a school-age course that's been created for professional learning, both for teachers and for leaders, um, that in the month of September, everybody will go through. Um, and with that, uh, I could go on and on. Um, but with that, we, uh, will, um, uh, talk specifically at this meeting. What is, what does this mean for how we lead, uh, instruction with our teacher leaders and with that cascading professional learning? Um, and look at progress monitoring data, um, until the next time we meet in October as well. So there is a thought, um, the build-out, um, and there'll be complete build-out for the, over the course of the year, but certainly, um, build-out through semester, um, and ways for us to immediately, um, step in if we're not seeing the results that we would like to see aligned with the quarterly reviews that our area superintendents will be doing.
So basically monthly accountability and check-in that we're implementing, Eureka with efficacy, that we're getting teachers trained the way we want them to, our teacher leaders are, are giving the support where they need every month.
Yeah, definitely monthly, uh, aligned to other systems, um, with weekly, um, coaching and support from area superintendents.
And building PLCs, I believe.
And building TLCs, right? And, and I liked, we like to say, um, a system of support and accountability. Um, because, uh, we cannot hold people accountable with, while also not providing the type of support.
Agreed.
On instruction.
Agreed.
And, and so just to double down on, uh, Tamra's comments. We've changed our system of supports at the central office level to lean in to be able to pool these best practices and share them across the area. And so anecdotally, I came to the district in the first of July and I asked for a HR report from, uh, Chief Bailey. And on the eighth of July, there was one teacher opening at Jenkins. And that was quickly closed out of fifty-two point four or whatever is the number of FTEs. Jenkins is a hundred percent staffed. And I would imagine that the turnover rate is probably in the single digit. And those spaces where there were turnover, there were probably internal recommendations of a network that Jenkins has been able to build with strong leadership and community support over a longer period of time. That support was so recognized by the district that Darren Joyner is now an area superintendent. So he of all of my area superintendents should be the one that first recognizes the importance of the role of the principal in developing that culture of instruction and efficacy. We, we know that we have staffing challenges. We're moving very hard to solve them, but we cannot expect miracles in places where we don't have the resources in place to actually, to be able to deliver them. It will not be any surprise if you look at the lowest performance and/or achievement or growth on any of these CMAAS, uh, results, that they will be consistent with places where many of you have visited and taken notes and said, why are there two long-term subs out of three teachers in a grade band level? Why is there not an extra administrator in this building? What, is this a new principal? Have I not met them before? The turnover and the churn that happens to the lower performing school continues to be a challenge, not in District eleven, but across America. And so we are seeking to develop a culture where we excite and motivate our strongest educators and administrators to take on the largest challenge, best swimmer, deepest part of the pool. We hope to be able to partner with the board to be able to bring programs to bear where you don't just have this happen in your higher socio-economical parts of the city, but you see the growth that you have all recognized happening in Bristol. I watched the perform, the, um, uh, school spotlight last year from Henry. We know that with the same intentional work by school leaders and the instructional rounds that we can do with strong PLCs, we know that we can get those results and we will be building that out all year.
Thank you for sharing that. You had a follow-up?
Okay.
Okay, I like what you're saying. And for the new principals or principals that are rather fairly new, I, I, I understand that. But we have, not all our principals are new and they've been in a while. And I think we all agree that, um, it's the building leadership that matters most. Um, so maybe we do this executive session, but you know, when is somebody gonna get dealt with? That's, that's what I wanna know. Because that has to be out there.
It's a conversation to have for sure.
So just doubling down on what you said Superintendent Goll. Last year I had an opportunity to visit North Middle School and had a two-hour conversation with the principal out there. At that time, he was the principal there. And then he pulled in the math teacher and he went over all the data with me. It's awesome what they were doing out there. It's awesome what they were doing out there. But what he shared is three or four years back, the culture at that school was not that, okay? Teachers were coming and going, there was a lot of turnover, students were misbehaving, discipline issues all over the thing. He drew a line in the sand and made sure that these are the things that there was, nothing he can let go of, they were non-negotiables, so to speak. And then he put the stake in the ground and built that culture where now it's a shining star in our school district for other schools. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to look at what they did at North, schools like that.
Retire store.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway.
Well, I'll just, I'll use your wheel analogy and, and the idea that the challenge that exists in many systems. Is you put a rock in front of a school and you give the team a hammer and a chisel. And at the end of the year, they say, look, I made a wheel. But you didn't tell them what size wheel you needed, whether it needed to fit into the subsequent intriculation to the high school that they're gonna flow into. It's very hard to be in any school in America, especially under the pressures over the last two years. If you don't feel that everybody in the system is wrapped around to support you and give you the resources that you need. Then you should be very proud of the wheel that you crafted over the course of that year without direction, without instruction, without supports. Then yes, outstanding, you turned a rock into a wheel. We want our wheels to roll together, we want our wheels to be by engineer and by design. And that's what we're gonna do for the places where we have strength, both in achievement and in growth. There are lots of lessons for us to learn. The reason that, you know, it's important that we start the year with what I'll just call the head insight show at this work session. Is this is all baseline for us to go. We, you know, over the last few days have been going over enrollment data and attendance data. The correlation between underperforming schools and poorly attended schools and poorly enrolled schools is, we'd all get a ninety-five percent on that test right now. You could all do the math yourself. We have to point them then into our area superintendents to say, where is that school on their one plan? What resources do they need and how do we support them? The expectation from area superintendents is probably a two-for-one in the amount of support that they give to a priority improvement school as compared to a performance school. So that's where we have, that's equity. We put our money and our time where our mouth is, we know where the challenges are, we have the resources. Very talented educators and administrators in this district. We need coherence and alignment on how we expect them to get where they're gonna get to. And if the rock cracks when we're chiseling it into a wheel, we'll get them a new rock and we'll try it again. David to high schools.
High school. Show goes on. So go to the next slide, so we can see, again, these are percent passing. So keeping in mind, even though you see it, you see a jump in the overall box, bar, bar size. Keep in mind it's commensurate with our middle school in the sense that it's roughly the same or slightly lower percentile. So what we see again, gaps in the same, the same areas persistent there across subgroups. EBRW is evidence-based reading and writing, that's the ELA equivalent that the board uses. And so this is grade nine PSAT, really critical transition year, really need, all years are important. But that ninth and tenth grade year are vital. If there is any, if there is any credit deficiency leaving tenth grade, the likelihood of that student graduating on time is significantly decreased. It's shown over multiple studies in multiple contexts. So I think, I think a Harvard study showed it decreases the likelihood by around sixty percent if you leave tenth grade credit deficient. So clearly we have some ways to make that up, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna put these students in that, in that position. So we can see similar, similar gaps, especially across economic disadvantage, forty-two percent passing compared to sixty-two. We go to PS, PSAT ten EBRW, so again, English, you know, right? We can see again, underperforming from year to year. In some cases, starting to catch, starting to catch twenty nineteen, and in some cases surpassing it, but generally, generally underperforming. As soon as there's any questions, you'll just stop me. So we'll go to the next slide, grade eleven, this is SAT and evidence-based reading and writing. Again, we have kind of that general like stair stepping down from, from year to year. We have eighteen percent and twenty-five percent passing among Black and Hispanic students respectively, compared to fifty-nine percent for non-minority. So all three are relatively, relatively low. And economic disadvantage is particularly pronounced here, thirty percent to fifty-three percent. Thirty percent passing compared to fifty-three. We go to grade nine PSAT math, percent passing again. Commensurate with, with middle school performance, but we see, this is the trend we don't wanna see. This is the down, this is the downward stepping across almost all subgroups, that's the real takeaway here. Math, math is a sticky, a sticky wicket to get moving again, to get moving back up. In this case, we have sixteen percent passing compared to thirty-six percent for non-minority. And eighteen percent compared to thirty-six for economic disadvantage. Grade ten PSAT, not quite the stair step, but again, that grade nine math year is a big transition. And especially given the impact of low scores coming out of middle school for math, we're gonna see, that's, we're gonna see that one stick around, I think. I think that will be slowest to respond and very, very high priority. But it's gonna be, you know, really that goes back to that implementation of, of Eureka and using those Eureka squared items as well as the CIA items to really drive instruction. An economic disadvantage seventeen percent compared to thirty-eight percent. So even non, non free reduced meal students, only roughly a third are testing college-ready or grade level, grade level. We go to grade eleven SAT math, percent passing, similar, similar trends. Five percent and ten percent passing among our Black and Hispanic students compared to thirty-seven percent for non-minority, ten percent for economic disadvantage. Across schools, we can see that Siva High School is, on multiple slides, exceeding pre-COVID performance. Five schools had more than fifty percent of their students passing at grade level, and then Siva and Odyssey scored above the state performance level. Go to the next slide. Oh whoops, I'm sorry, that was, so that's the Siva, Siva and Odyssey. If we go to next, grade ten, okay, here we go. Grade ten PSAT on evidence-based reading and writing, Siva and Odyssey again exceeded. Eight schools had more than fifty percent of their students passing or college, on track to be college-ready. If we go to the next, grade eleven, this is SAT, and no schools met or exceeded pre-COVID performance. All traditional high schools fell below fifty percent of their students passing at grade level or being on track for college readiness. Five schools at or below twenty-five percent. So big, those, those are big warning, those are bright warning lights again on the dashboard that we really wanna, really wanna focus on. And then by next slide. The summary is essentially, essentially the same for grade nine PSAT math. But we can see in some cases, very, very low, Mitchell being at nine, nine percent passing for math at grade nine this year. And then all of our traditionals being below, below that even thirty percent or thirty-three percent mark, so they're. Grade ten, the next slide, grade ten PSAT math percent passing. Again, Odyssey exceeded pre-COVID performance. All but one school scored below thirty-three percent of their students passing at grade level. So a lot of work, a lot of work to do. Grade eleven, similar, similar trends in SAT math percent passing. Then, next slide, high school EBRW median growth percentile. Siva grew faster than, than majority of schools in the state, and seven schools did not meet expected growth. In high school EBRW. I forgot to mention, thank you to Director Ott for pointing out a couple errors, slide thirty-five and forty. Those are updated on board docs and I also sent you some, some of those fixes, thank you for catching that, I apologize for that. We go to the next slide, high school math median growth percentile. Four schools in math outperformed the majority of schools in the state, so about that fifty in GP. Three schools were in the bottom thirty-three percent. Five schools did not meet expected growth. So some key takeaways, the next slide, and I'll wrap this up, I'm sure you're tired of hearing me. The accountability clock remains frozen, meaning all the school performance framework ratings stay at the nineteen level. But they are issuing school performance frameworks on what they're calling a zero year. So it's not impacting any schools on the clock. And if you move to priority performance, priority improvement rather, or a turnaround, it's a zero year. You won't start the clock until next year if you stay on those ratings. Those were supposed to be issued this week, they found an error in calculations. So they should be being issued next week, which is why you saw so many placeholders in the district improvement plan for the school performance framework. When we get those, we will, we will share them out quickly. So twelve schools would be placed on watch and ten would move to improvement if it were a normal year. We're, we're kind of just going with it's a normal year. Even though the state isn't putting our schools on the clock, we kind of are. We are looking at providing those supports and those trainings and really honing in for those schools that moved to, moved to priority improvement and, and turnaround. Continued support for common informative assessments, actually that should be common interim assessments, CIA's. District benchmarks, five essentials, using the one plan for monitoring, monthly, at least monthly check-ins. Even more with, with our priority schools. And continued efforts to systemize improvement efforts across, you know, as needed. As we have some of the highest performing schools in the region, and in some cases in the state, and some of the lowest. So that's an indication, kind of a bimodal distribution, that's an indication that we're not systematized yet. Need to be systematized for all poor performance, ideally, we're systematized for high performance across every school. But we're getting it, we're getting it smattering across. Some of that is a reflection of how growth is calculated, but again, it's enough information to go on. We don't wanna wait another year for perfect data to make a decision, like that's a mistake. Take what we have and understand that it's, it's showing us that we need to really systematize what we're seeing working in some places to other, other locations. And I believe that is, that's the last slide, so any questions on high school or the overall takeaway?
Well, what stuck out to me on that, on your summary here on that last slide. Was that three of the four high schools, or for lack of a better word, were specialty schools, not.
Traditional high schools.
Yeah, not just, you know, one of our four high schools, it was either Bijou, Odyssey, or Siva, which stuck out to me. Why? Maybe smaller schools, more intimate, a lot, could be a lot of reasons.
May serve a particular challenging population. They do get their own school performance framework as well, so as an alternative education campus, that's an AEC, if you hear that acronym. They are able to use multiple measures that is not, that are not available to traditional campuses. So their school performance framework may come out to be pretty strong because on other measures, they might be able to use ACT work keys, say, for, for career, you know, career radius. They can use other, other measures to, to show growth because of their challenging.
Is Siva an alternate education?
Siva is a charter.
Dr. Banks, you had a question? Okay. Any other?
I do think it's noteworthy to talk about the achievement levels at Odyssey. And so the investment in early college is paying off. We need to continue to message the importance of early college opportunities. Other concurrent and dual enrollment opportunities should be coming to the board this year in relationships with UCCS and hopefully potential relationships with CC. Dr. Scott Mendelsburg will be helping lead that program. But hats off to those decisions that were made prior, in the prior years for Odyssey. If you want to feel really good about a high school experience, stop by Roy J. Watson Campus and, and talk to an Odyssey student. In my first two days of school, those were very engaging conversations to hear the motivation of the students and how strongly they felt about the experience that they were getting. That was representative of their futures as well, so.
It's a program that we need to market.
Absolutely, sir. If you listen to NPR, you'll hear Pike's Peak Early College about once an hour. And every time I go back to my map and it's not on our map, so. We do have strong campaigns happening right now and we could actually think about running Odyssey on one of our digital billboards that we have in town.
I think they've changed their name to Pike's Peak State College now, right?
Oh, yeah.
So I do have a few questions or clarifications, so we know. So you said twelve schools would be placed on watch, that would be either priority improvement or turnaround. Is that your prediction or do you?
Thank you, yes, that is our prediction based on, based on a worksheet that we use, that we haven't got the actual SPF yet.
Okay, so, but the state is at some point in time going to tell us if it's twelve or fourteen or ten?
Correct, that'll be coming out next week.
And then those schools, if they are priority improvement or turnaround, would have to submit a school performance framework that the board has to approve? And is that all, what's the deadline for that?
That, they, that will be January for those schools because of the, they've moved it back. But we're already working, we're kind of predicting those, so we're already working with them within their school.
So if I remove that accountability clock, and I just want to see what the difference is with COVID. Schools that got on that accountability clock had to be on that for, had to demonstrate two years of, you know, improvement status or performance status. Before they could come out of our accountability clock. So these schools, now that they got into it, next year if they perform, would they come out of it or would they have to demonstrate two years?
No, they would come out of it.
They would come out of it, because this is kind of a year zero.
Correct.
Okay.
They did just also issue a, it's kind of a minor thing, but they're not counting participation rates against SPF's this year. They were planning on doing that, but they decided not to because their calculations were so difficult.
So we will still get an SPF for every school, even though it doesn't mean anything? And then we will know which is the cutoff point for priority improvement, turnaround, and all those things.
And I'll, I'll just say, it does, for us, it does mean a lot because we're kind of approaching it as our own accountability clock.
Okay. The correlation with five E, five essentials data stood out, so there is a correlation. Schools that have those five essentials, especially that effective leadership and ambitious instruction and are doing well with the parent engagement too. Seems to be overcoming some of the barriers that are in place. And then, you know, their students are performing well, so we just need to ensure that the culture and the climate in every school is up there. So that, that's one takeaway I had. Two schools that stood out to me, that's to some extent a concern to me and I will point them out, because they are pathway schools. Last year they were identified as pathway schools. They're going to have, one is going to be an arts program, I think both are going to be arts program. Columbia and Martinez, and in your estimation or this thing, Columbia is going to be a priority improvement school. And then Martinez was close to, pretty close to there too, because it seems like they're to try. So is that something, when they are going to be on the accountability clock? Is that school still going to be able to do that lifting that is necessary, that staff in this transition year? To get that school prepared to become a pathway school while they are trying to get, get out from under the clock?
We'll evaluate that and report back.
Okay. When are these, are these seen as discourse public now? Can, I get this question all the time, if parents want to know how their students perform, how would parents be able to get this?
They usually send those out once the SPF is calculated. So those will be coming out in the next few weeks and we'll be distributing those.
Okay, so it's not still available for parents?
They do it all in one, one big piece because growth is such a big part, especially enrollment.
So I do want to point out the pride spots in some of our schools that stood out. Bristol, Chipita, Scott. I don't have all the schools out there, Taylor. They all seem to be doing very well. Queen Palmer, another school, so, and then North, obviously. So kudos to those schools.
Yeah, it's interesting to see those schools pop up across multiple, multiple measures, which is a good sign for systematizing approaches and strategies.
Okay, and then the next step going forward, to address some of these things, we are going to be talking about the fund balance allocation. So that is a conversation that will come in front of the board at some point in time. What supports that we can provide these schools?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, going for, back to you, Dr. Colicky, looks like it's.
One more.
UDEP.
It's like a college lecture.
You talk to a dissertation in defense.
So the district improvement plan. So this is the first, first draft and you saw a lot of placeholders in the going down. In the target measures, annual performance targets. We want to set those based on, if you remember some of the targets that we set based on board priorities, they were kind of tiered in the sense that we're setting higher targets for turnaround schools, our our priority improvement to get them out of those ratings as quickly as possible. So looking at like eight percent changes, six percent changes. So we're kind of waiting on that to incorporate those straight into the district improvement plan. Again, I do apologize, even though it's not our fault, it's CD's fault on just the format of this document as you get it. It is very difficult to read and it's kind of painful. So where you see format issues, we will try our hardest to correct those and definitely like nine hundred and ninety-eight percent, I think, is one of those. All those, we're correcting those, but sometimes the format is out of our, out of our hands. The approach here is that DAC accreditation is reviewing these as well. And so our next DAC accreditation meeting will be all district improvement plan. And we will take those edits as well as your edits. We're committed to incorporating those edits in for the next draft that will be in front of you for non-action on the fourteenth. So the sooner you can get those edits to us, the quicker we can get it incorporated and get that updated draft to you.
Is it coming on the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth? Because when I talked to you, you said it's coming as twenty-eighth as non-action and then October tenth or something as action. Just want to make sure that we get this UDEP. Is it coming fourteenth and twenty-eighth or twenty-eighth and tenth?
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Okay, sounds good.
They actually moved our deadline back because they delayed, so it's October twenty-fifth, I think. But we're going with the fifteenth just because we have everything in place. So I guess if there are any, any questions around this, it's really a lot of what we just talked about with where we're currently at. And then setting strategy based on what we get from our growth. So if you are okay with it, I will just open it up to questions and then any edits that you have. So if I can write them down tonight, the most efficient would be if you just shoot me an email and we'll incorporate those as we get them.
And we have time in the, since it's coming as a non-action on the fourteenth and then twenty-eighth coming as an action. Even till it comes as an action item, I don't want to wait till the last minute, but maybe the week before then, provide some feedback. The document is not complete because you're still waiting for it to get populated, right? So as it gets populated, send us the most recent version.
I'll probably be sending you a weekly.
Okay. Okay.
Especially after DAC accreditation, we incorporate those changes, that would be a big, that would be a big change. Any concerns, questions?
Just, I had forwarded a couple of questions and one of them was on the learning walk, some page thirty-four. And it talked about the year one to three administrators. And what, how do you define what that administrator is? Is that principals? Is it area superintendents? Is it R superintendent? Is it Tamara? You know, so it just, yeah, you're technically a one to three-year superintendent. Are you going on the learning walk?
I'd be happy to be on learning walks.
Very good. I'd go with you happily too. And almost though those, the question of, you know, you're going to walk with one of the following and maybe the building principal is the year one to three administrator that is being referenced. So just, if you can explain to me, what is that, what does it mean? Who is a one to three-year administrator?
Those are, those are newest, newest principals and assistant principals. And the goal there is, so this is, this is owned by, by Tanya Nash, tied to, tied to Randa and the teacher improvement work, instructional improvement work that she's been doing. Getting them into a culture of being out of their office in classrooms and observing instruction. Becoming, becoming the executive, you know, the executive educator of that building. And so, so creating a culture from the very start is the goal there.
Okay, thank you. And the target setting you've referenced, this is like the very end of the document, you've referenced that we're waiting on the district performance framework, but it's, and it sounds like we won't have to wait very long. Okay, I was just.
We'll get them embargoed by the beginning of next week, I believe Tuesday, and then they become unembargoed. I think by Wednesday or Thursday, I believe, next week starts. So once that happens, we'll incorporate them into this document and then it'll be DAC and you guys will be able to see those response.
Sounds good. And there was one other, I think, well, there was the concern, it was twenty-four. And it talks about the root causes and the five E's, so five essential survey and how it shows that you know, listening to the employees essentially and, and working together to have innovation and build that trust. So I had mentioned, you know. So how about the superintendent relationship and earlier you mentioned, I made a note, the weekly coaching is going to happen for principals, it sounds like, as well, from the area superintendents? That's right?
Yes.
And so my question then too was like, how are you planning to model the conversations and the innovation and building that trust? And I didn't see that in here, except then I noted a few things.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's reflected. You know, I've obligated to the board and the community to do a full visit, not just the hi, how are you at an open house, to every school by the first of the year. We have them scheduled two-a-days every Friday. We did the first two last Friday, West Middle School and Wilson Elementary School, which are hour and a half to two-hour-long visits framed with the area superintendent by CAO and Tamara Acevedo, myself with the principal. And we are highlighting their major improvement strategy as reflected in the one plan and spending time in classrooms observing that major improvement strategy and then sitting back in their office to reflect upon what we saw and how we can continue that improvement. So that's top layer because I need to be able to make sure that I'm seeing this consistently across the district. That's the same work that's happening every time that an area superintendent is visiting their schools. And so it's not just a parade of people following Tamara and I around. That's the work that's happening that you see reflected here. I'll make sure that my strategy is also reflected such that the system sees and reads that we have leaned central office on a forty-five degree angle to cover down on the needs and the supports of schools, not just to sit here and report on the actions of schools.
And is there, is there a grassroots way to move information up if an educated educator, educational assistant sees or a paris sees, you know, here's how we can improve? I don't know if that's in there reflective of that statement and I was just curious about that too. And it sounds like something that was happening in June. The collaborations, you had a steering committee of principals, some principals and the area superintendents. And then you had the working group with some educators, it sounded like, and collaborating. And I just, I hope that will happen and include a way for people who maybe weren't there to share and build that trust that you're listening, so. And maybe that won't be reflected here, but it was a thought.
I'd love for you to join us on one of our upcoming school visits to see the way that we're seeking to engage and listen. But communicating that in a systematized way is possible and we'll seek to bring that to you to show you how we do that.
That'd be great.
Brandon will charge that one.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Because everybody loves to tell Dr. Comfort their problems, so I think he's a person perfect to, to systematize that.
It's good to have a good listener. Absolutely, thank you.
So it's good to know that you are, your schedule is like every Friday, you're visiting two schools?
Yes, sir.
That's good information to know. I'm assuming the area superintendents are in a school once a week or at least?
Go ahead, Brandon, I'll call you out. Why don't you just share with the folks how you go about leading schools?
Yeah, so as Mr. Gall mentioned earlier, for our schools that are performing well, we're there at least every two weeks for a two-hour visit where we do walkthroughs connected to their one plan. We talk with staff, we look at instruction. We reflect on data, then we do some operational conversations for our schools that we have more concern with. We're there on a weekly basis for a two-hour visit, amping up those supports. We're also bringing more people with us to kind of lean in central support. So not that they're there to observe and pass judgment, but that they're there to observe and then in the moment be able to provide resource to a principal or a teacher in a town. So it's not, it's not the same for every school. Some schools obviously get more of our time than others.
Good. Any further questions on this? So one thing I wanted to get back to you, Dr. K. This new district assessment that we have, Renaissance, that's been incorporated and our teachers trained, I think somebody, Acevedo maybe said that that was, that's happened. And we are going to do that three times this year?
The window just opened.
Okay, window just opened. So are we doing it now at the beginning of the year and then when would the second test be during?
December.
December and then the?
And then third, third is a little, is a little bit later. We're working out the timeframe, but it's going to be late March, April extra.
Okay. And even high schools are doing this?
We have amazing buy-in from high school. Actually, we just talked to Coronado, they're looking at using, using it in an extended fashion for reading diagnostic tools. Palmer is looking at utilizing it for other things, so we have a, we have the highest degree of buy-in that we've seen yet.
And this is different than Galileo that we used last year because this progressively determines where the student is and the test that one student gets would be different than that?
Correct, yeah, it's adaptive.
Adaptive, yeah.
So it means that a student isn't having to sit through and try to answer questions that they have no idea about because it's going to respond to their previous answer. Even more importantly, it makes it shorter. So we are clearly training our school assessment coordinators who are now training teachers on the, on the assessment delivery to plan on twenty minutes. It's, it's, you are, you are done with that and that's a big improvement over what we had with Dell later. Another piece is that we get immediate results, so there won't be the longer delay that we had previously. And the data dashboards that are associated with it are very, very strong. So I'm, I'm thinking it's a significant upgrade for us.
Okay, thank you. Keep us on the loop as far as Hobbany Schools, the state identifies. That's going to be a long board meeting. Usually we have four schools coming in, presenting in front of the board. Now if we have twelve schools coming and presenting in front of the board, we may have to just set aside two board meetings.
We do two board meetings. I think it'd be better if we do that by region. Maybe do east side, west side, or north side, south side, just kind of do it that way.
Yeah, well, but we have time. It doesn't seem like it's that October fifteenth deadline. It's January fifteen, so I'm sure it will go through DAC accreditation and DAC before it comes in. But I mean, there are some good things that are happening in our district as we saw, like you said, talked about the bimodal thing. But there is an urgency that we need to fix this. As we come out of COVID, our students are behind, especially in our middle schools where you see five percent proficiency in math in some of our schools. That's concerning, so for me, it's always been set high expectations for all the students right at the very beginning. And then follow through with rigorous first instruction, which is happening in others and then keep our parents engaged in it. Parents, parent involvement directly translates to some of our, Chipita, you go and see you have parent engagement out, out there at the school and then there is no, no wonder their students succeed and perform well. We got to get the same parent engagement in all our schools and then effective building leaders. We got to be able to build them up and also build the next layer, level of leaders because we constantly lose some at the end of the year. So we got to be able to build those assistant principals so they can step in into building leadership if necessary. And then last thing would be accountability that we hold everybody accountable for the goals that have been put forth in the UDEP or the school improvement plan. We just don't want every year, I've been on the board three years, we come back every year and say we didn't accomplish what we set as a goal in previous years, your academic goals were not achieved, academic goals were not achieved. So hopefully one of these days we will come back and say our academic goals we set were achieved this year. Yeah, good luck, guys. Thank you for sharing this information. Good. So I think we are pretty much at the end of it. We had other, one thing was Ms. Bailey had sent us an email about two memorandum of understanding. And she wanted a board thumbs up on it. Ms. Bailey, do you want to explain what those memorandum of understandings are?
The one memorandum of understanding was brought forward by the area superintendent that addresses school assessment coordinators receiving a stipend that is collaborated upon within the schools by principals and teachers. So this is a new one, you know, you know that, you are probably already aware that within the elementary schools, the student assessment coordinator is an additional duty as assigned for, you know, the individual. Some, I think a lot of times it's the, what, teaching and learning coach. Whereas within the high schools and the middle schools, you know, it's the assistant principal. So they brought forward a, the creation of a memorandum of understanding to provide a stipend to help support that role within the elementary buildings. So it's new and.
So are, in previous years, they were not getting anything?
That's exactly it, yes. No compensation.
Okay.
And, you know, this will be the first, first year for it. And during negotiations, it will roll into the stipend article within the master agreement.
And how did you arrive at that number, twelve hundred and eighteen hundred?
Um, that's where Joe and Thad were involved in looking at the stipends that are within the master agreement and kind of use some of that, some of the, what's already within that article to kind of, if it's a larger building with more staff, that's why, you know, I think fifteen hundred for the larger buildings and then twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, about eighteen hundred.
Yes, excuse me, eighteen hundred.
Okay, any?
So we're writing a memorandum of understanding for what we agreed to already in negotiation?
No, this is a brand new memorandum because we don't have any type of compensation for the student assessment coordinators. There was nothing. There's never been any type of, any type of a stipend or compensation for that role. There was nothing. There's never been any type of, any type of a stipend or compensation for that role. That additional duty within the schools.
I want to introduce a couple of other voices. David, do you want to explain the importance of that position? And then Sheri, I'd love for you to talk about how this has felt in the way we have operated in the past. Because these are the two bodies that.
Before you said, so we were off, they were doing that without getting paid before?
Yes, that's what it is.
Yes.
And normally as a takeaway from other duties, many of these positions are the church teaching and learning coaches in the building. The assessment coordinator is critical, that we have to have that function. And so if people are going to do that, we want that to be above and beyond, not in place of.
Thank you.
Because we're losing the coaching. David, go ahead.
But they are going to be doing, doing, doing this during normal school time. It's not like they're going to be doing it.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, so it's a state mandated position. It has to be instructional, has to be an instructional employee. Per building, so one per building. So it's, it is a mandate. I think that, I mean, it could be, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheri, but it could be out. They could be doing some of this work outside of a normal school day.
Yes.
Especially leading into C M A S time. Training is during, during a normal, normal work phase, but I would say a majority would probably be working outside of, outside of the school day. We are upping the amount of the expectation of our, with our assessment schedule. That was one of the main, that was one of the main things about, in the past, it was just C M A S, maybe, maybe some benchmark or something like that. But now managing Power School or Performance Matters rather, managing Star Renaissance, managing C M A S, managing Acadians, managing. You know, those different pieces. It's, it's a multi-tiered piece of body of work. So that was, that was the logic behind it.
So they're not gonna get paid twice. If they're gonna do that work, that money will cover a separate time. They're still going to remain teaching during their normal work hours. And if they do more, they're going to get paid out of this, under this M O U.
They will be assigned the SAC role because then that's who we train and that's who we communicate through primarily. So once they're assigned the SAC role, they're expected to do a particular body of work, which we've identified for them and laid out the expectations. And then at that point, they would get the stipend. So it's not dependent on job, it's not dependent on what task they're doing, it's just dependent on their role.
What I'm hearing from Director Lomar, and I have the same concern, is that their normal job does not suffer. Because they've been added this, given this added responsibility. If they are a T L C, then their primary job is to be a teacher learning coach. Teaching our teachers in the classroom. Now, with this added responsibility in there, is that going to take away from their primary job? That's the question.
What I would say is it actually flips that. Right now, the fact that we are not providing a stipend means that. In the large majority of our elementary schools where the T L C is the, the assessment coordinator, it is taking away from their coaching responsibilities. They are completing these tasks that could be completed outside of the school day. Currently, they're completing them during the school day.
Because they're not getting paid.
Yes, moving this to a stipend, the expectation would be that they continue to maintain their T L C duties or teaching duties. Or whatever their normal daily duties are during the day. A stipend does imply along with it that those. Tasks and roles and responsibilities are completed outside of the school day. You saw great evidence in the data tonight that we need coaching now more than ever in every one of our schools. And this will allow our T L Cs to maintain that focus, especially during our heavier assessment windows of the year. Because we would clarify that that work now gets done outside of school, normal school hours.
And who's going to be responsible for holding that timeframe within its limits?
As with any other stipend, that's the responsibility of the principal.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Sheri, but we built in the caveat that the area superintendent needs to approve the assignment of the assessment coordinator. To ensure that they're, just to ensure that we are building in that accountability and expectation.
And then I'm moving around a little.
I wanted to stay in the positive.
Those decisions will be made collaboratively with those elementary school staffs. It's not the principal assigning it to someone. And we've also, in collaboration with Ed Insights, given schools some guidance documents about how to choose a staff member. Who would make a really good assessment coordinator because it's not necessarily the T L C. Could be, doesn't have to be.
And also helps calibrate their time.
Yes.
Because we saw a wide variety of perception about how much time it requires. So this task typically takes this amount of time.
We also surveyed elementary principals to ensure that they were in support of this. And overwhelming majority either agreed or strongly agreed to this proposal.
So what are we going to do at Middleland High School? Phoebe, is this, it talks about elementary school. Are we, do we have this assessment coordinator in Middleland High Schools?
Let us, I can speak to that. Those are almost always assistant principals.
Okay, so they don't get stipended or anything?
Which we felt was part of duties assigned as an administrator as compared to additional work for a T L C.
So are we looking to put this on consent or we're gonna talk about it?
No, we're just giving a thumbs up right there. And then if the board is agreeing with it, then you would sign it. And then next year during negotiations, it will go into the master agreement.
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, it's, it's a memorandum of understanding between the superintendent, right, and the group? Or is it the board? Because if it was the board technically, then it would be a vote, but it's.
It's between the board and the district.
In the district?
Right.
No, the district and C S E A.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, district and C S E A, yeah.
All right, thank you. That was my understanding as well. Because before, this, these did not come to the board even. This was up to the superintendent, if I believe.
I, I think this was the previous direction that we gave, that we would like to at least run it through by us. To have an understanding, what are the memorandum of understanding that are being signed? Otherwise, things were happening without. And then it was coming during negotiations time. So at least for us, maybe it doesn't need to come to this. Just to keep us informed about these are the M O U's that are being signed and.
For information only, sir.
Yeah, for information.
No secrets, no surprises.
Involved with that?
Yeah, we are good. Yeah, we are good. And there was another one too?
Yes.
Okay.
The other one has to do with for twenty-two, twenty-three, any teachers on special assignment. That are tapped on the shoulder to step into an assistant principal role in case we have a vacancy and we cannot find. A retired principal to assume that role. We would like to have that option to place that teacher on special assignment in that role. So it was just an updated document from last year.
And is there a P E involved with that doing something here?
They still receive their teacher compensation. They stay on the teacher pay scale, but they receive per diem. Correct, outside of their contract.
Right now, we don't have anybody in that capacity. We do, we have a Tosa as an assistant principal.
Yes.
Five of them, apparently.
Five of them?
Well, no, we expanded it to five just in case. So we wouldn't have to come back and say, well, you know what, we've reached the, it was three. And we did have three last year. So we expanded it to five, five, you know, slots. But right now we are using one. For one employee over at Man.
Man? Okay. And we have two more Tosas that are assistant principal in a different school. That's what it is.
Not right now.
So just one?
Just the one.
Just the one?
Just the one.
Director Mac.
I'm not clear on they, they're paid by their contract plus per diem. What does that mean?
That means if they have to do additional duties in that role as an assistant principal. Then we pay them per diem because they're working outside of.
Instead of their contract hours?
No, into, well, over and above their contract dollars. So they have a contract, what? Teaching contract, but say they have to, you know, go manage a, what, after school activity or a Saturday event. Then yes, we compensate them for that.
And the per diem is based on their salary, their teacher's salary?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So is this going to get added to the?
Will it come on retirement?
So every year it's coming as an M O U?
I think last year we did put a paragraph in. We did add a little paragraph to say that we wanted to utilize teachers in the assistant prince, interim assistant principal role. If we run into, into difficulties where we cannot get a retired individual, principal, assistant principal to take that role. But just kind of playing it by ear. We really don't want to add it, you know, full blown yet.
Okay. It says this one expires July first, twenty twenty-three.
So we'll see. You all will have to tell us if you want us to add it as part of the contract.
No. Less.
Okay. We are good with this too? Okay. So we are good with both. And just going back to the previous one, the T L C or whoever it is as the. We just want to make sure are the. Want to ensure that our T L Cs are still being able to do the T L C job that they are hired for. You, over and over year. Here, when you go to our schools, the T L Cs have become.
Assistant, back to assistant principals.
Yeah, because those schools don't have assistant principals.
And so it's why we wanted to make sure that we put our money where our mouth was and our attention as Tamara and I have been working. On building out our theory of action. We were very specific of adding language beyond the importance of principal leadership. And including the coaching of instruction in classrooms as our theory of action. So it's not just central office says we need fifty good principals. We would love to have the fifty best principals in the country. I hope to be able to tell you that we do. But we'd have to know that those fifty best principals are also driving the best instruction in the nineteen hundred plus classrooms. That we have responsible for. So we included that in our theory of action, of which the T L C and the coaches that belong to the area superintendents. Will be spending the preponderance of their time doing.
So thank you. The last thing that Marcella gave me a note to remind the board about was. On September fourteenth, is this action or non-action?
Action.
Action, it's coming. So on September fourteenth, we have an action agenda item for the Casby delegate designation. So one.
The Casby what?
Delegate design, yeah, delegate designation. So I think Director Art has been the Casby delegate for the past three years?
Two, three, maybe three?
Three. And then Director Daniels is the.
He's our alternate last year.
Okay. So, so this is coming in front of the board. If the board is comfortable with Director Art, then. But I just wanted to throw that up there, so you guys are prepared for September fourteenth. This is an action agenda item. Director Art, I'm, you are still interested in serving in that capacity?
I would be happy to if someone else wants to, that's fine too. I don't want to fog it up, but.
Okay.
It does, doesn't, just so everyone's clear, it does involve going to, I mean, ideally, you show up, right? So you, there's an October delegates assembly and you go and you vote. And you need to research and maybe check back with the board if there are things that aren't obvious on how you would vote. Much of it's in our policy and our legislative agenda, but sometimes there are things that it's like, well, that's not clear one way or the other. That you might want to check back with.
And where is this October convention?
The October meeting, I can tell you what it is too, although, Maricela, if you know, off the top of your head.
But usually it's not.
It's in Denver area this year.
In Denver, okay. Somewhere Denver, Fort Collins, wherever.
Not, not Fort Collins this year. That I know.
Okay, Denver. And usually you have two or three conventions in a year? That you need to attend or like, I mean, how much travel?
The other one would be, there are some votes in the December Casby convention.
That's in the broad mo.
That's there on that first weekend of December. Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's one, there's just a couple of hours there.
Okay.
That you would have to be. It's October twenty-second and, or twenty-first and twenty-second. The voting would take place on the twenty-second. Twenty-first is informational mostly. And it's at the Doubletree Hilton, Denver Tech Center in Greenwood Village, if anybody cares.
Okay. Thank you. So next week we have a board retreat on September seventh. Marcella is the Pioneers Museum confirmed? Okay, Pioneers Museum, four o'clock. Walt will be there, Dr. Cooper will be there to lead that conversation again. Superintendent Gall will be getting to us some of that performance objectives and that frame. Good, great.
September seventh, you said?
September seventh, next Wednesday. Okay.
Although we're not, we'll be at the Pioneer.
Pioneer Museum, not here, at the Pioneer Museum at four o'clock. We will finish the conversation that we started in the earlier board retreat. Make sure that we have everything set in stone for, as far as guidance from the board for Superintendent Gall. What the board wants to see for the first six months and the next year. And so he's got. That input from the board and we can finish that conversation and Dr. Cooper will be there to facilitate that conversation. And we'll also look into that self-evaluation, which we did not have time to complete at the previous board retreat. Superintendent Gall wants to talk to us about.
Just want to go over the basics behind performance contracting for energy savings company. This is a follow-on to the conversation of potentially adjusting S R three by moving some of the large facility asks that are baked in there. Into a performance contract so we could free up some more dollars to impact instruction and achievement in our schools.
Okay. I'm going to see if we can put that in a board retreat or if that has to come at a different time. But hopefully we can. Put that in there at the board retreat or have a board work session. Categorize it as a work session and then a retreat to do it at the same place. Is there anything else, Marcella? Anything else from board members? Okay, we finished. We?
We're gonna vote next week on Casby.
No, on fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
So not next week, at the board meeting.
Yeah.
On fourteenth. Okay?
I'm looking for two.
We are just voting on which board member.
That's fine.
Represents the, the board in the Casby. Okay, okay. With that, we are adjourned at six twenty-seven, six twenty-eight P M.